Good evening, everyone. The call.
Turn on our microphone first. Call to order, the September 2022 meeting of the Homewood Planning Commission. Mr. Goodwin, could we please start with the roll call?
All right. Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Ms. Wilcutt.
Here.
Mr. Harwell.
Here.
Mr. Respento. Mr. Armstead.
Here.
Mr. Broadhead.
Here.
Ms. Andress.
Here.
Mr. Cronteras.
And Mr. Roberts.
Here. Okay, next on the agenda, approval of the minutes from August. Has everyone had a chance to review those? Any concerns, edits, changes?
I can motion to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we approved the minutes. Communications, Mr. Wilson, any communications from the vice chairman?
None.
None from the chairman as well. So we'll move to new business. The first case is RZ 22-09-01. This relates to 2773 BM Montgomery Street. If the applicant would come up and present your case, please. Yes, thank you. If you could please, before you start, sign your name and address on that on that log up front. Gentlemen, if you also just tell us your name and address before you start.
Tom Champagne.
You want to go ahead while I'm doing this?
Sure. I've lived in Homewood for the last 20 years, raised a family here, started a business here, actually in the building that we're proposing a zoning change on, and is now vacant, and we're looking forward to seeing if we can get it rezoned for the church to meet and pray.
Okay, if that's it, we're going to open up the public portion.
He's got it.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
He's got it all kind of like, listen, you can't cut him off. He's very prepared.
You can't you can't pause like that on me. I'll jump to the next to the next stage.
Sorry. I'm Jamie Warren, 20-year resident of Homewood, 1604 Grove Place is my residence, and I also serve on the team of elders for Havenfield Community Church. So, good evening, and thank you for your time. I'm sure we can all agree that we love living in Homewood. That's all that's while we're here. It's it's interesting. I began attending Dawson Memorial Baptist when I when I was four years old, and I drove from our home of Estevia to Homewood several times a week for church activities. And when I was a teenager, I decided if I was an adult and ended up in Birmingham, I wanted to live here. So it's been it's been a joy to do that. And I'm sure that we can all agree that Homewood is home, and there are so many things that we love about this community. But for this particular issue tonight, as we gather as Homewood neighbors, it might feel like that we're talking through the backyard fence. And when we're talking through a backyard fence, if you kind of follow my analogy, it might be sometimes hard to understand exactly what everybody's saying. Do we understand what everybody really means? So I guess, and to go with the analogy, I'm asking that we just kind of talk in the front yard tonight as neighbors, and and just be able to clearly understand everybody for for the commission, and then for anyone else who has comments to say tonight. So in order to do that, I thought we would be able to get to know each other just a little bit. If Mr. Goodwin, do you have the slides, or Mr. Wallace, are there slides? Okay, there we go, thank you. So Havenfield Community Church is a plant that came out of Dawson in 2013 because our pastor, Todd Harrington, had a vision for something different. And so we're a traditional Christian church with very non-traditional rhythms for gathering. Our style is very informal, it's very outward, very relaxed. In fact, if you look at our name, Haven kind of represents our time to come together in a safe place to worship, and then Field really talks about scattering out to serve our community and to connect with the disconnected, to those who would never darken the door of a traditional church. And so we're to be a community who loves God and to help others follow Him. That's that's what our purpose is. We believe in hospitality, we believe in being missional, community, and holistic in our faith. And so we have churchwide gatherings on Sundays, but our small groups meet in homes. So think of Sunday school, that doesn't happen on campus, that happens at homes during the week. So we're a small community on purpose, and we'll never be a megachurch. We never want a large building, that's not who we are or who we aspire to be. So but most of all, we want to be a good neighbor wherever we are. So the location on BM Montgomery Street on this case might seem like an unusual choice, but I think I can explain why that makes sense. The Gallup organization's done an eight-decade survey that's measured church attendance in America, and since 2000, so the last 20 years, that attendance has dropped 30 percentage points. And giving to traditional American churches has dropped as well. But the non-traditional approach has really worked for Havenfield, so since its founding, it has grown steadily in membership and in our giving and in our budget. So a large traditional church building is neither our goal or necessary for our church to accomplish its mission. And so we can grow a bit more in the capacity of what this subject property offers us, and then any excess growth would be in new church buildings and new church plants elsewhere in the community or even in different cities. So we've been out a lot, been without a long-term space for nine years at Havenfield Community Church. And in that time, we have met in all sorts of places. We started in the Homewood Library, we were meeting in Estevia until COVID, we've met in rented church ballrooms, hotel ballrooms, we've rented in parking lots, Easter services at Sanford, and even a brew pub. So we would like a permanent space to fulfill our mission, and in the community where 80% of our church body lives, and that's Homewood. So and Mr. Champagne, who owns the property, is supportive of that cause. So for the last nine years, we've been homeless, so to speak, but for the last three years, we've been in an earnest search to find permanent space. We've looked in West Homewood and other parts of the city, we've considered other buildings very similar to 2773 BM Montgomery Street, we've explored other churches and asking about sharing their space, we've even engaged the assistance of multiple real estate professionals. And we've learned a lot about the process of what that zoning requires and how we can lawfully do that. So this property is zoned C2, it's already a commercial zoning use, and the only other permitted use for religious assembly, according to the code, is for institutional or MXD. Well, institutional doesn't make sense if you look at the map, and we don't have the three-acre minimum, we don't need the three-acre minimum for institutional. So the only other way for a permanent home for our church is MXD. And if there was another zoning class that would allow religious assembly, we would ask for it, but that's that's the only one. So I kind of started tonight by saying that we really want to be good neighbors, and and we understand that there might be opposition to our case tonight, and we completely understand and respect that. But I really want to make sure that we're heard, that some of that opposition might come out of confusion or even fear. And it might sound like we're quarreling through the back fence, the backyard fence. And so we want to be good neighbors, we want to be part of a solution, and we're not here to be disagreeable, we're not here to impose our will on anybody. But this commission might hear, after I sit down, a concern that we're somehow encroaching on neighbors or in the area in general, that we're developers, or that we're targeting a certain area or invading residential zoning to do that. And I know that that might be a fear of some of those in the room. And and I know that the worst fear, you know, could be upsetting, but I think if everyone hears me out, I think that everyone on the commission and everyone in the audience will see that that fear is not part of our request at all. This request would move the existing C2 commercial to another commercial use, MXD. No residential areas will be changed as a part of this request. We didn't target a particular location at all. Mr. Champagne has the has the building and is a member of our church and wants to see it used in this way, and this location is central to the majority of our members. And our presence and use actually, we think, in our humble opinion, protects the flow of BM Montgomery Street more than any other use would be, and I'll show you in just a few minutes. So the commission also might hear that there's fears that we're going to alter the property in some way that makes it undesirable or an eyesore for the community, and that is not true. Would you mind going to the next slide? So this is the zoning map. We want no significant changes to the building or the footprints or elevations, maybe some new paint, and we want the exterior to look like it does now. You could look at the zoning map here, I know everyone on the commission got something like this, but the subject property is with the with the star, and you can see that that is a C2 use and the surrounding uses around it. Can we go to the next slide? So this is the exterior of the property, and this is how it looked when it was built in the 1970s. So our vision for this is to preserve the exterior and front elevation, and actually all elevations, exactly like they look today. Maybe it needs a new coat of paint, we love that, maybe we change the door, and some modest compliant signage. But that's what we want to do with the property. We want it to look like it did when it was built, just with some fresh paint, history preserved. And so right now, in fact, under the current zoning of C2, the property could be developed into a car wash, a bank, a restaurant, a gas station, grocery store, dry cleaner, or more than a dozen other high-traffic retail categories. And so and this could happen with building heights up to 35 feet, and this could happen without any public hearing or city council approval with its current C2 zoning. So there's a much greater risk of something that the neighborhood might not want with its current use than what we're than what we're proposing, which is a very specific use for religious assembly within MXD. Thirdly, this council might hear that some concerns that we might be clogging up BM Montgomery Street with traffic multiple times per week and end up blocking driveways in front of our neighbors' homes, but none of that's going to happen. And if we go to the slide of the parking area, actually, yeah, this is a this is a view from all all four four different ways. Parking area. So we have more than double the requisite parking for MXD at the maximum capacity of the building. At our maximum capacity, it requires 28 spaces, we have 59. We currently average 19 cars every Sunday now. And our future neighbors on BM Montgomery Street like Iron Trub Fitness, Squad Fitness, Add Momentum, Off Central, and the property where North Star Martial Arts is, have already written letters of their support of our presence and their off-street parking. Our presence would be limited to Sunday mornings when the rest of the street is quiet and businesses are closed, and we'll treat our neighbors on BM Montgomery Street with respect. We have no other churchwide gatherings during the week, only Sunday mornings. But the main concern that might come out from, might be in your minds or might be in the minds of others in the room tonight, is what would happen to the property if rezoned MXD? And all I can say is only the good Lord knows the future, but I can very clearly show you our intent. Most of Havenfield's elder team and church body is in their 40s. We've got school-aged children. Now, there's some that are younger and certainly some that are older, but that's the core. And we've been out of been without a permanent home for nine years. So if you just think about it logically, why would we invest what it's going to take to renovate the interior of this building only to leave in five or 10 years? It just wouldn't be good stewardship. And if we can really be the good neighbor that the community hopes that we are and that we intend to be, why would the street ever want us to leave? Especially if we're not changing daily life on the street with traffic, with parking, any of the other concerns? And so we look forward to our kids growing up and leading the church in this building on BM Montgomery Street. In fact, I would love to have my funeral in that church on BM Montgomery Street, Lord willing, when my my children are way older than I am, right? But so the soonest that any new use or public hearings for this property are hopefully going to be when everybody here is long gone and our children's generation are sitting in these chairs in City Hall. But even if I'm wrong, even if I'm wrong, any other use in MXD other than religious assembly, if I'm not mistaken, has to be approved with a development plan and the process of public hearings before this commission and the city council. So the worst fears of the opposition would have a lot of obstacles to hurdle to ever come through. So in good faith, we have executed an initial lease on this building for office space only, not for religious assembly. And that lease has both longer terms and purchase options in it, and we've been praying for this, we feel led for this, we've been looking for nine years. And feel and we're counting on a yes from this commission to hopefully pass it along to the council. And I realize that many of you in the room don't know me, and I can't demand respect or anything, but I I would ask if you if we can just hear each other out and be able to hear each other clearly, and you hear our heart, I don't think that any of the worst fears are in our request tonight. And I hope that the commission hears that, too. And and in our humble opinion, we think that this is a great chance for preservation on the property, to keep the look and feel as it is, it's a great chance for minimum impact on daily life for BM Montgomery Street. And dare I say, the best chance for the kind of neighbor that the community would really want, with the kind of use that it would really want for that. So before I sit down, does the commission have any questions of me?
We'll have questions. If we do, they'll be after the public portion.
Okay, thank you.
So if you if you're planning on answering those questions, you might want to stay close by, so when it's your turn, you can go back up.
I'll be right back there, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
And you're sure you're done? Okay, good. With that said, we'll open up the public portion of the hearing. If anyone wants to speak to this case, you can come up now. I'd like to just remind everyone here, and I think Mr. Warren mentioned this a moment ago, our role here is advisory for rezoning. So regardless of whether our recommendation's positive, negative, or neutral, if there's a tie, I guess, this will go to the city council for final decision. So just wanted everyone to be aware of that before we got started. All right, that said.
Good evening, everybody. I was researching this case and was reminded of a previous case at 2014 Linden. And so I did some research that kind of ended up at a dead end because it really didn't have enough time to go any further with it. But 2814 Linden was rezoned maybe seven, eight years ago? Seven, eight years ago to I4. It's a single lot. It was the clothing store on Linden behind the back bank. So I went to my zoning book, the one online, and the four that I have from my service on the BZA, I4 is not in any of them. So my question is, was that a one-time for 2814 Linden? And if so, could that be resurrected for this parcel, if that makes sense? Because it obviously does not have the three-acre requirement, and it would put them in institutional like Bethel, Friendship, and Union currently are, although those are I2s, and also are not on three-acre parcels.
Thank you.
Okay, so I've listened to the.
Would you identify yourself?
My name is Marlena Burnett. I live at 2511 19th Street South. My family has lived in this area well before the 20s, so we've been there for a while. And I would just like to address the fact that it's not fear that that we are speaking about, it's reality. We've been through it over and over and over. So the fear is real because it's there. Now, when I heard the gentleman speak, and I'm sorry I didn't get his name, I don't think that was Pastor Harrington.
No, that's Jamie Warren.
Jamie Warren. Okay, so we can't keep hoping. Hope is dead. When you spoke, and it was always about Homewood, did I ever hear you say Rosedale? See, that's the issue here. It's Rosedale. It's and I feel like changing this property to mixed use actually opens the door, opens it wide, so that we can just keep going this way and keep going this way. If you should leave, if you should leave, it's it's going to be an open door. It's already an open door. We've already had that, we've already been through that, we go through it all the time. Rosedale has gotten teeny, teeny, weeny, tiny. There are a lot of churches in Rosedale. I believe, this is just my thought, is that it would be okay if it was a church, because Rosedale is predominantly African-American, but we are a very diverse community, whether you see it in this audience or not, or whether you see it in any of the city council meetings or not. Some people just don't show up, and that's just the way it is. It's not that, it's just because it's a church. We do have four churches in Rosedale that have been there, three of them for over 100 years. My fear and reality is, should this be changed to mixed use, and after X number of years, the church decides to leave, what happens to that? Okay, then we have to come back to another of these meetings again, where somebody is is proposing another plan, another something for this particular building, for this particular space. And we really don't want that. We already have one space there that should not even be there in the first place. And I think we all know which space that is at the end of BM Montgomery. It just does not belong there. Now, I am not against church, please don't get me wrong about that. It's just the form. I understand the difference. If you want to go institutional, you don't have space for that. Okay, so these other churches obviously have been grandfathered in because they've been there long enough. They've been there, and they will remain there. But to bring in another church that could possibly, possibly, because the owner of this building is actually a member of this church. Okay, so what I want to do when your lease runs out, or what do I want to do if I want to just say, I want your lease, I want a recall on your lease? Then we we're going to be met with this situation again. And frankly, the citizens of Rosedale, I know I am, I know my mama is, and she's 93 years old, and I know that most of the people and most of the homeowners in the Rosedale community, they're elderly, they're elderly, or we are renters. So you have, they have no way of really communicating in the the way that we communicate in this in this world now, to get the message out. Look, guys, you've got to be vigilant, because if you're not, okay, things are going to sneak up. And I'm just going to go one example. Years ago, I was not living here, was not here. But when that bank, when Homewood issued the permit for that bank, I can walk straight out of my backyard into that bank, and they did not do what they were supposed to do to give us a boundary. That's ugly. And absolutely nothing was ever done about that, and it's still ugly. The trees are dying. I do not, and I I don't, I hate to say this, I just don't feel in my heart that there's not something else that's coming up behind this rezoning. I just don't. I think that that if once it's zoned mixed use, then we got to we got to come back and fight this again. Okay, and I'm tired. We're tired. Why is it, and it was asked at a meeting, there's plenty of commercial buildings on West Homewood? And I was told at the meeting, because the doors were shut for them there. Why? Why did West Homewood shut the doors down? I don't know, because I didn't address it at that point. I did not. I don't know what the reason is, but I just know that there's something here that doesn't add up, doesn't add up. And my one basic point is that never did you say Rosedale. It's always Homewood. We know we're Homewood, but we are citizens in a community that was here, that made up Homewood. If it wasn't for Rosedale, Homewood wouldn't be here, as well as a lot of other of the communities that joined together to make the city of Homewood. So let's respect it, let's let's just get that out. And let's just stop at a certain point, let's just stop. And let's just go where things should naturally be. What things should naturally be? I know the parking situation, you have that handled, that's great, that's great. I don't think it's going to stay that way, I really don't. But we're tired. And to just, it's it's just, I have to sit down now because I just feel it's just another way of encroachment. Let's make it mixed use so we can do something else with it if and when we decide we don't want to be there any longer. And then we got to come and fight again. It's tired, it's tiresome. Everybody up here, sitting up here, knows the demographics of the community of Homewood. I mean, let's be honest, let's be honest, people get tired, and we're tired. But some of us are not going to stop, and I'm one of those. So you're going to see me, and you're going to hear from me every time these these kind of things come up. And I do appreciate your attention, I do appreciate you letting me speak, and you all have a pleasant evening.
Thank you, Ms. Burnett. And I had meant to say this at the beginning of the public portion, out of respect for, and this is my fault, out of respect for everyone's time, if we could try to limit our discussions, that we have a lot of people here in the office, if we could limit it to three minutes or so, that would be that would be great, that would allow everyone else to 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 state their state their opinions.
Okay, I'll make this turbo. My name's Dee Tips, and 33-year resident of Homewood, a 20-year business owner in Homewood. Currently, we leased the spot at 2777 BM Montgomery Street, North Star Martial Arts. And it's just my understanding just then that there was parking that has been arranged, I'm not aware of that. We have, if you look back at the picture that Mr. Warren had placed up there that has like the red building and his the the star where the church is going to be, we're at 2777. So in March of 2020, or February of 2020, we signed a lease, and we put in about $132,000 in leasehold improvements into the building. And part of that, if, does anybody have, can they pull up the slide from earlier? No? There was an empty lot, it's it's three parcels. If you look, there's three parcels that sit, yeah. Okay, so you see 2777 is one parcel, and then 2773, 2769 are two other parcels. We have the 2777 and the big red part around it. And what we did was, it was an empty lot with just grass and human feces and some other things like that. And we actually leveled it and put concrete down and made it into an outdoor training area. We do have some parking going on there, it's never been lined, it was not intended to be a parking space. We have a garage door on the side of the facility, so we can have outdoor and indoor classes at the same time, pull mats out. If you drive by there right now, you can see that there's mats out in the back of the of the building, where those can be taken off and put out. And this actually came in very, very, very handy, because we all know what And this actually came in very, very, very handy, because we all know what happened March fifteenth of two thousand and twenty. So we weren't even technically open yet, and we had just dropped a hundred and two, a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars into the build-out, into this area. And, um, and the world shut down, including our businesses. And so, what did we do? We became very creative, rolled up the garage door, we had outdoor, um, classes for six, seven, eight, nine months, and we can still continue to have outdoor classes, um, Monday through Sunday. So, um, and as you know, with a karate school, it's a come and go, it's a lot of dropping off and, and picking up. Some people stay, we do have, um, spots in the front of our facility and a few in the back as well. Um, but for the most part, that's, that's it. Um, and so for some clarification, um...
Okay, Ms. Tips, if you could wrap up for a few minutes.
I will, I will. Um, technically, um, Baltic is the owners of the, of the three parcels. Um, that is Heather Champagne and Kirk Kuntz. And Tom is the, he has managership of the property, but our lease is with Joe Chivinets, my current husband, and my father, in, under the name, it's Wayne Tips, Tips and Associates, is on the lease. And I'm one of the associates, but that's my biggest concern, is the parking, because it's, it's not, it's not for everybody.
Now, get clarification, just what you said, you leased twenty-seven seventy-seven, the building, the martial arts building?
Twenty-seven seventy-seven.
You have, uh, leased parking agreement with the owner Baltic?
Baltic.
Okay. And y'all are, are y'all open on Sundays?
Yeah, we teach classes on Sundays.
You are open on Sundays?
Yes, we teach classes on Sundays, we have private lessons, uh, where we teach those as well, yeah.
Um, and so you utilize those parking spaces?
Yeah, they're really not parking spaces, there's no lines.
Yeah, there's no, that's right, they have not been strived, but you and your clients utilize that parking space on Sundays? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, we do. We do, we have private lessons, we have open gym, we have classes such as, um, um, the hyper class, which is like a tumbling and such class, yeah.
Have, have you and the owners discussed the parking arrangement, uh, in relation to this church?
I have not spoken with Heather, I mean, Heather knew I was coming. I have never met Kirk Kuntz, but...
Or Mr. Cham, Cham, you have?
And with Tom Champagne, no, I have not had a conversation.
You have not had those discussions? Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, hey, I'm Jason Zen, I, um, lived in Homewood myself for, uh, the past twenty years. Uh, one-one-five East Edgewood Drive, not far from this, this property. Um, and I just wanna say I'm in full proposal to say yes, uh, to give it a go, to move forward with the rezoning. I heard a lot of, um, I don't know, just humility from Mr. Warren, and just, let's work together, let's, let's not put heavy footprints down, but let's work, and let's, let's be the change that we wanna see. And so, um, I was excited to hear what he was talking about, just the small group of people who love each other and wanna love their neighbor. I think that's all about Homewood. So, my vote, yes.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else here who would like to speak to this case? All right, seeing, no, well, sorry ma'am, didn't see you there. If you could, sign in and then tell us your name and address, please.
My name is Teresa Hines, and I live at twenty-seven twenty-eight B.M. Montgomery Street. Um, I have lived there all my life. And, um, it's like every time we turn around, it's, we get smaller and smaller. And, um, I don't see any other places that go through this, like we do. Um, during the week, you can't get in and out. The main street that comes from downtown. Um, almost had a wreck the other day, just trying to get out from the construction in the morning time with the big rigs, just trying to go to work. And then coming in, evening, afternoon, the bottom of B.M. Montgomery Street has, um, changed to, um, it looks like a little downtown commercial park just on B.M. Montgomery Street, which used to be Loveless Street. We had the name changed, we've got a gym, we've got a big building, it's like three stories. Um, and it's like this council never cares about the residents in this small, small area. So, like she said, no hope is always fear. And, um, there are a lot of places in Edgewood, Edgewood is crowded as well. Even going down Broadway and other places. It's crowded, crowded, crowded. The more we build on Eighteenth Street, where you park. Okay, the more you come up B.M. Montgomery Street, where do you live? There was a sign at the bottom that says residential. That was taken down, and I wonder why. But, I mean, we come, we speak, and there are deaf ears. I love church. I'm all for church. But we met at the Rosedale, I mean, at the Lee Center. And, um, it's all about Homewood. When y'all gonna care about Rosedale? We have a small park now, we used to have a swimming pool. Now it's a walking trail. So, when you vote, think about the residents of Rosedale, the beginning of Homewood. And I don't think y'all, we get new council people every, every time we turn around, and we're at the same drumbeat. It's like going to the University of Alabama, being the first black person to go to class. And it just feels like nobody cares. So show us some love, and help us protect us. And we have Mexicans, we have Vietnamese, we, we love people, we can gather. So think about us when you make decisions. And that's all I ask of this council. To think about everybody. God made everybody, and we all bleed red. It's not this part, but show us this small community that's getting smaller, that you care. And that's all I ask. Think about it hard. Think about what I said, and let it resonate in your heart to show Rosedale, we're still important to Homewood. The beginning, and we wanna be in the end. Can't be in the end if you wanna change and say you wanna be buried in this church, but that's not what you said in the beginning. We only wanna be here a couple of years, maybe ten, nine. You did say, I'd like to be buried at this church, or have my funeral here. So to do that, you have to be there longer than what, nine, ten years, am I correct?
Hopefully.
So think about us. And it's, think about us. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else from the public wanna speak to this case before we, uh, close the public portion?
Good evening. My name is Sean Barakat, and I live behind the wall that separates Rosedale from the rest of us on Beckham Drive. I have been working for over a year and a half now, going behind the scenes to try and figure out why it's so hard to protect Rosedale. And all I ever hear is, well, we love Homewood, and Homewood is great, and we wanna love our community. Well, Rosedale is our community. If it were not for Rosedale, there would be no Homewood. And if, if you just stop for a moment and think about that, just think about it. Just think about standing anywhere in Rosedale that exists right now, and looking. Look out towards Eighteenth, look up Eighteenth. Look towards Service First Bank. All of that was Rosedale, all of it. Forty acres of roses in just the Rosedale Park District. Now, when you look, all you see are tall buildings and glass, and you still see part of Rosedale, but, but it's just shrunken so much. Eighty acres. In two thousand and four, the, the resurvey, the survey was done for the historical survey, had shrunk from eighty down to twenty acres. That was in two thousand and four. Now, we just completed yet another survey that we didn't need to do, because we could have already used the two thousand and four survey that we had to establish a historical district. Something that former Council Ward One Brit Thames and Andy Gwaltney introduced in twenty nineteen. And then it just disappeared. This is what's left. And I, I wish I could let everyone see this. This is what's left of the Rosedale boundaries. It used to be a hundred acres, okay? I don't even know what this is anymore. I, I don't even remember. A- all I know is this. The, the resurvey meeting was so disturbing to me that Rosedale is, was, it was absolutely described as something, if it were alive, Rosedale would be in ICU. It would be in critical condition. Okay? No more mixed, no more mixed, no more commercial, no, no more of that, because that's gonna change the flow of the existing area. And it may lose its historic. It's on the historic registry in, in Washington. It could completely be gone if we continue rezoning, rezoning in this area. So, you know, yes, community, let's think about the community. Let's think about Homewood, but let's think about the fact that there are properties in West Homewood that you could go to today that are ready, you don't have to install anything.
Ms. Barakat.
You got all the parking you need.
Ms. Barakat, we are, we're beyond the three minutes, if you have anything specific to this case.
I have a lot of things, but that's all I have. Don't do it, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, anyone else wanna speak?
Good evening, guys. George Segal. Um, I'm in Ward Two at fourteen twenty-two Overlook Road. I am a long-term member of Havenfield and hope to be for a long time. I have, um, I grew up in Homewood, I went to Dawson, we moved back, I started going to Journey, Todd, um, started Havenfield, we started going there. Havenfield's all about community, that's the reason we like it, that's the reason we love Homewood, um, because it's all about community. I hear the, the voices of, um, talking about Rosedale, I feel it, I went to Shayskahaba, that's where a lot of the Rosedale kids go. Um, and so I knew them growing up and respect it. Um, what I understand we're trying to do, and what Rosedale's trying to perfect, protect, um, is communities. And what we wanna do, I want my children to go up in a, in a godly church, in Homewood, preferably. Um, we have that in Havenfield, it's been a struggle, uh, not having a permanent home. And really, I think the problem we have here is a zoning technicality. We're not trying to start a, a Shoney's over there, we're not trying to start a grocery store. We're trying to show up on Sunday morning, get in there, teach the kids about Jesus, get out. Which is frankly what we're already doing. Um, and we're not gonna cause the issues that are being brought up. There's a process in place, it sounds like, to bring it back to this group if there is an issue. Um, I think we've got that in place, I think frankly, we're gonna see a rezoning package brought to this group or a larger group, the city council more likely than it is that we peel off and then somebody else comes and puts a three-story Airbnb in. It's not gonna happen. Um, because you have the tools in place to be able to protect and contain us, because we put the constraints on us ourselves in the zoning process. So, I, I wanna see my kids stop going to church in a tequila bar, start going to church in a Sunday school room in Homewood. This is a simple slam dunk case, in my opinion, in that you have a group that cares and loves about Homewood, gonna respect Rosedale for what it is, and will not wanna encroach on it. Um, and, and I would plead that you please vote yes, and allow us to stay in Homewood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name's Brandon Dillard. Um, I've not been in, in this community as long as some others, but I can tell you what I know about this church. Um, the people that lead it, it's, it's exactly what Jamie's described, what Jason's described, it's a group of people that love Jesus and, and love our families, love the communities, and we exist to serve and, and love one another. And, and I think you can feel good about the integrity of the words that were said, the intent behind the words that were said. Um, you know, they're, they're, they're men I hang, I'm around and hang with throughout the week, my kids are around, my families are around, and they're people of integrity, and, and I know you can believe what they said and, and take it to heart, so I'd ask you to vote yes.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Alrighty. Mine is going to be very quick, but my name is Ally Harrington. Um, I grew up in Homewood. Um, and after I graduated through the Homewood School System, I went across the street to Sanford University, so I stayed in Homewood. Um, and after that, I'm still in Homewood, because I'm currently an instructional aide at Shayskahaba. And I have loved every single part of Homewood growing up. I would love to pour into all parts of Homewood if I can continue, um, through Shayskahaba and through just being a community, part of the community in Homewood. But I would love for y'all to vote yes for our church. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm not seeing anyone else coming forward, we'll close the public portion of this case. Um, Mr. Warren, I guess Mr. Champagne, if you would come up and whichever, or both of you wanna come? want to come up and address questions from the commission.
Yeah, I'd like to ask you a question. Why are you requesting mixed use and you don't ask to add churches on C2?
Thank you for your question, Mr. Contreras. I didn't know that would even option. From my understanding of the zoning ordinance, how it's written, there are no conditional uses.
Well, if there is an option to make MXD, it should be an action to do C2, which, you know, which should fall within the restrictions of C2, because mixed use, you know, it's, in my opinion, wide open. I mean, you can do hotels, you can do movie theaters, you can do all this other stuff. So my question is, why are you on mixed use?
Well, we understood that the only option to have religious assembly that would be in compliance with the zoning ordinance would be either institutional or mixed use, because there is no allowed religious assembly within any of the C2 uses.
Yeah, but neither one is allowed. So why wouldn't you consider C2 to put the churches in it?
Just charge its own C2 now. Its own C2 panel.
Yeah.
Right. Religious use is not a permitted use in C2. Should it be? That's a different question.
Right. Yes, that's the question, yeah.
Frankly, that would be a lot easier. I think everybody in the room would, you know, might feel, you know, better about that. But the process of rewriting or doing some kind of text edit to the zoning ordinance, you know, seemed to be a non-starter, from my knowledge. You all are the experts.
Mr. Chairman, can we get a clarification from Mr. Smith or Sherry on the three acres minimum?
The way that, the way that I read it in the zoning book is there are additional stipulations that refer to Article Six for planning, a plan. If you, it doesn't say the word if, but it would apply to a parcel that were three acres or had more than one building.
Right.
In this case, you do not have more than three acres or more than one building.
Correct.
So in fact, I2 would be an option for you and might sit a lot better with some of the people in the planning commission, who, like me, like everything that I hear that you guys are interested in doing.
Right.
But have heartburn with mixed use as a zone. But that's, I appreciate the question, Jennifer, because I agree. It seems to me like what it's, what the zoning book says is not I2 has to be three acres. What it says is I2, three acres, appendix six applies.
Yeah, it requires, I'm looking at that same language now. It says institutional developments or institution developments on sites of three acres or more, or featuring more than one building on a lot or parcel shall be developed in accord with an approved development plan under Article Six, which is what Mr. Brady, Mr. Wilson, sorry, just referenced. So it appears to me to be a viable option in terms of just the use that you are proposing. And I know you're not the, not the owner and probably couldn't commit to anything on that front, but that might be more of a question for Mr. Champagne.
Certainly. I mean, knowing, knowing, you know, that that would even be within the realm of possibility is, is, you know, with the pre-meetings and the different analysis and different things we've done, you know, that would be new information. I'm not sure if Mr. Champagne is ready to comment on that option or not.
Not really. I mean, I think some of the situation to get us to this point was understanding to have the least amount of change, least amount of impact, work within the zoning. That is in front of us. In a perfect world, we keep it C2. We just add a church to it. But I guess my understanding, and it's been a long educational process, my understanding is that's not feasible because of the way Homewood's codes are structured. So then, because of that, because I think we'd all agree that would just be the easiest thing to do, we have to find a different zone so church can fall into those zones. So we're, you know, we're open-minded and, of course, I mean, we want the church there. We're open-minded. It really wasn't about the zone designation for us, more so than to get a church in that. And we've leaned on the city and our contacts in the city to kind of get clarification on the best path forward, to make that happen. The way, and I can tell you, we've had several meetings trying to figure out the best way to not affect Rosedale, not affect Homewood, stay within the zoning, kind of thread the needle, make everyone kind of happy. We felt like this was the best direction due to the way the codes are written and the zoning laws that we have to work within. So, you know, we're open-minded as far as kind of that goes.
For sure.
I think it's great to have, could BCA have to change permitted use?
No.
I mean, that was kind of the answer we got, too. And we just got affirmed now, so we stopped right there.
But the inherent problem is the zoning ordinance, to me, is the problem.
It seems like the challenge to kind of just adding church to C2 to make it really easy. I mean, quite frankly, that would be the very best solution. It's just not a solution provided to us.
At this point.
The firm.
Right.
Yeah.
Those are dumb questions I've got, too. Correct. I mean, so you've got, there's really only these two options, well, I2 or mixed use. But in mixed use, could they proffer and reduce and then limit the amount of uses that would be permitted under that?
Patrick, can you turn your mic on, please?
There we go. Sorry. Could they proffer reducing or limiting the amount of permitted uses under the mixed use zoning, so that in the future, certain uses that may or may not be, that could be construed as negative uses, would not be allowed under that without actually going through the rezoning process again?
But does that stay with the land when they don't own the property anymore?
Yeah, well, it would.
So does it stay with the land?
Yeah.
It seems to me like they're already proffering that it's going to be a church. The concern that I have is, I apologize, but what you're talking about, how you guys have grown, I appreciate, I salute, and I love. You've grown from Vestavia to where you are now, to where you want to be now. Everything that you said makes me believe you will outgrow your space eventually. And it might be somewhere else, and you might have multiple locations. But as a planning commission member, my greater concern is what's next. And the mixed use, while someone would have to come before the planning commission, some future planning commission, to get an approval for whatever that occupancy would be, it's a whole lot more difficult to say no when you have an affirmative listing of this isn't a permitted use, to say, "I'm sorry, sir, you can't have a liquor store there in mixed use," even though it says liquor store. As opposed to, if you're I2, you can't have a liquor store in I2.
Right.
You can't have your church there.
It's a legal situation. For example, the property that was brought up earlier on B M Montgomery Street that was rezoned in 2014, when they came to the council that I was on the last term for a change in their development plan, legally, can we deny them that if it's within their zoning? Legally, we felt we could not. It was within their zoning. So I think, I agree with Mr. Wilson, opening up mixed, just, is just too problematic for the neighborhood.
I think we were, at the time we made the decision to put this together, we were told I2 is not a solution, or at least that's how we understood the conversation to be.
That, that's not true. I2 and MXD, they've always been on the table.
We've done a lot of learning over the last three months, a lot of listening and a lot of communication, but, so that's news to us actually today, so.
Well, for the, for the general public information also, GERD and ERD also allow for religious worship institutions, so. But in your spot, and where you are in town, it makes more sense to be, in my view, I2.
Right.
I agree with that.
Sure. So let's just take a few logical leaps and say that the commission is comfortable with I2, property owner is comfortable with I2, and the church would be as well, and just kind of put that off to the side for a minute. Is there any other concerns if that was our course of action? Anything else that the commission would want to know?
Well, as Ms. Tips just noted, it sounds like the parking is not hammered out yet either. Is that right?
And I can respond to that.
Yeah. I've mentioned earlier, I wanted clarification. I've got, as part of your MXD submission, Mr. Champagne, you've said that 2777 was designating 22 parking spaces for the church's use on Sundays, and even during the week, with the exception of about six parking spaces. And yet, the person who is leasing the building from you said, "No, that they are open on Sunday for business," and that they're, so unless that lease is running out, how do you?
I, I think we have kind of a miscommunication on that lease. And the building is leased. It's one lot. So the parking is, is wide open for usage. The building is leased to Baltic, manager Baltic. The property, the land itself, is not leased. It's the build, the use of the building. The parking lot or the lot next door is used for various, lot of parking. We try to park there to kind of limit traffic. It has used multiple different, different events out there and whatnot. Joe uses it. That's who's actually on the lease, working with him. So I think we're within the rights. Talked to Joe yesterday. Didn't seem to be a problem as well. So we can kind of get that ironed out. I think we have enough parking spots regardless of those parking spots anyways. But I think, right, we have enough agreements.
We do, you know, and again.
We can get that specifically hammered out of council, too.
Parking has to be within 150 feet of the church, so that may be a limitation on some of these others. I haven't measured it. You, you had two other letters saying, "We will allow that. We don't use our parking on Sunday." They could have use of that. But again, any development plan that's approved is going to tie down that parking specifically. And your letter was saying that these 22 spaces will be available for the church on Sunday. Yeah. And, and so.
So we might have a miscommunication.
Yeah, you'll, you'll have to resolve that, but there needs to be a, there will be, if it's approved, there will be a parking agreement that's approved by our city attorney and you and everyone else, committing and designating that parking for the church use. So just, just let you know.
It's a conversation we've had, too.
I'm confident that even if so, if some of those spaces in the adjacent lot were in play, that we would, we would meet the requisite parking for the 28 spaces required by the code. I think we had more than double, so.
Again, I don't know if that's within 150 feet. You know, that's a requirement.
Yes, sir. I think, Mr. Goodwin, I think, I think most of them are. I guess it just depends on how that, if you talk property line to property line, I think we're in pretty good shape. Any other questions? So I guess I'm in the peculiar position of maybe asking advice from the commission.
I would carry it over. I would get back together with the city and reconsider. Not to speak for you, Mr. Chairman, but that would be my recommendation.
That's the sense I'm getting of the room. I believe, Mr. Goodwin can correct me, that an application for a different zone, an I2 as an example, would require a new application, new notice to the public and that sort of thing.
Redoctrification, the whole, the whole process. That's right.
If it's just comparison, our, our, the real issue is not wanting, but, or not having the ability for churches to be in C2 or C4, right? What's the process for us submitting the, not even when it's built out, to, to, and everybody lives?
So, so that zoning, we get that zoning, the zoning law provides.
Yeah, I guess what's the, I guess what, see, those zones are new, are relatively new. We haven't gone through that process. What's that process involved? It was just adding one, an extra permitted use?
Yeah, I think so.
Would it seem to be easier to approve instead of mixed use?
Well, we, we, you would have to change the zoning regulations to change the permitted uses under C2, which is a little bit more of a time-consuming process than what we're talking about today.
Well, that's one part of your, how long does that process take?
I'm sure, and there's public hearings and you've got a, I would, I mean, how long did it take us with the fence ordinance? Six months?
Not even close.
Seems like the path of least resistance would be to.
If the opposite says I agree to change it to C2, does it have to go to another meeting in the future or can we do it tonight?
It is C2 already.
It's already C2 now. There are. Right, but the.
If you wanted to change permitted use in C2.
We don't have the authority to allow a C2 to be a church. We don't know what, we don't have the authority to.
If we allow mixed use, mixed use is not allowed either.
Generally, the idea. If he wants to proceed with mixed use and how is that, you think?
So if I may, just address just a couple of things, just for the benefit of the room, if I can have just another moment. Ms. Barnett, Ms. Mize, and Ms. Barakat, thank you for sharing what you did. Thank you for coming tonight. And I just want you to know that I've heard you, and I know that this is important to you guys. And I do believe in Rosedale. And I'm sorry that I didn't mention Rosedale, my name, in what I said earlier. But I think that what we're all about here is to try to be a good neighbor, and we certainly want to do that. And thank you for coming and expressing that tonight. Just wanted to say that. I think that if there is, if the best course of action would be to carry and be able to come back with a new application, and, and this commission feels like that there's no other concerns other than the actual zoning that we're asking for, for I2, then we should probably do that.
Well, it certainly, we wouldn't really technically be carrying over as much as it would be.
A new application.
A new application.
You would be requesting to withdraw your case tonight and then to come back and resubmit a rezoning under, for, under I2, if that is what you want to. Otherwise, if you're asking for a continuance, we would ask you to concur with that, if you want to allow planning commission to and staff to review some of the issues that were raised tonight in that intervening time.
On the current application.
Right.
Got it.
And then to come back, but this is, this would be the, this would be the rezoning that you're asking for tonight. So that the, so that the commission would be taking action on next month on that, on the current submission. But if you, if you're wanting to reconsider or withdraw this case tonight and then resubmit for an I2, then we would have to go through that notification process again.
Right.
Yeah.
We can pull it anytime. If we talk through I2 and find out that that's not a solution for whatever, because we were told that that was not a solution. Whether, whether it is or isn't, I think we get kind of different answers. Because, so, I mean, can we pull it later?
You, right. If you, if it's your desire to continue this case until next month and the commission concurs with that, then during that intervening time, I would think that we could discuss this issue and then communicate with you some of our thoughts with regard to that. And if that's a result of that, it might be better to go with I2, then you could request to withdraw that case and then we'll go forward with another application at another time, if that's.
Point of clarification, does anyone know the deadline to make next month's agenda for? It would be the November meeting.
I think it's already passed.
Already passed, right. So it would be the November meeting if we were to. Right.
I think we got to get the information. That's, that's the issue for the process.
Right, yeah.
I'd rather get the information the way we're doing it.
And carrying over doesn't prejudice your right to obviously withdraw and then file a new application for November.
Sure.
It's just kind of a play saver. It's just kind of a play saver.
I think, again, just to go back, if we could just C2 church, put the church on top of the C2, that would be great. But that's not an option. So I think we still are a little unclear what we can and can't do. So, I mean, I'd like to get feedback, most certainly. So maybe we can make the process a little bit more seamless next time we're here. We're just going to wait, yeah, continue until that thing can give us feedback.
Okay, so you want to carry this case over to the October meeting?
Yes.
And in the meantime, gather more information?
That'd be good.
Right. That's right.
Yes.
Staff will, when planning commission, will discuss some of the issues raised tonight and try to give you some input or guidance. But, and then that choice is yours to come back with this current proposal and to go forward and ask the planning commission to vote on it.
Right.
Or, the other side is, if you decide you would withdraw it, then we would. And if that is, if that is the decision tonight, let me advise members in the audience that, so if it's continued until next month's meeting, it would be on this first Tuesday of October, I think that's the fourth. But if, for some reason, a decision is made, the applicants decide to withdraw their case, we will advertise that on the city's website. If you'll look under upcoming meetings, and there'll be some notification on the city's website, thecityofhomewood.com advising you that that has been withdrawn. But right now, if that is your desire to continue it, then for the benefit of the audience, that the case will be continued until the next Tuesday, October the 4th, at the same time here to reconsider this case. But again, if it's withdrawn, we'll try to notify you via the city's website. So if you'll make note to look for that, or call our office, or communicate with us, we'll get the word out to you as best we can.
And Fred, just, so I'm clear about this. We've now heard the presentation, we've heard the public portion, we've closed the public portion. We're kind of in that last stage of questions from the commission. We would start right there if we came back next month. We would continue where we left off.
That's right. The public hearing portion has been closed. So if this case is carried over, then the questions would continue from the planning commission. We would issue those, but there would not be another public hearing. It would not be open to further discussion. The public hearing was open and closed if it's continued.
Okay.
That's what we want to do.
Do you want to continue?
Yes. Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll now move on to the next case, which is RZ 22-09-02. This relates to a rezone request for 536 Cobb Street.
Good evening. James Parsons with Shoal Engineering. Our office is at 1001 22nd Street South in Birmingham. I'm here tonight with a loaner, Tom Walker, the developer of the proposed property. It's in the West Homewood District. It's just, the property is just south of, there we go, just southeast of the existing Econo Lodge. It's about 0.7, about a little over 0.7 acres. Has an existing vacant office building is currently on the site. We have no proposed changes to property lines or anything associated with this. It's really just a rezone. The developer has the adjacent Econo Lodge property under control. That property is currently in WHD, the West Homewood District zoning. Really, our goal tonight is to, he's got, he owns this property that we're, that's in question. The goal is just to have the two properties zoned consistently. That's kind of step one in the process. Ultimately, the desire is to redevelop the entire area. But really, until we get past this first step, to understand whether this large piece is part of the redevelopment or not, we'll move to more of a site planning and master planning process. It's kind of the next step. You know, as you all well know, the WHD zoning is, you know, is all plan-driven. You know, whereas the GERD, the current zoning has, you know, a host of uses that you could, you know, go out there and develop today. So our goal is really to bring these two properties consistent so that we can move forward with a development plan and a master plan that, you know, we think you all and the residents would be proud of. So this is our next step, or our first step, and hopefully follow the city's process moving forward.
Yep, and my name's Tom Walker. I'm the president and principal of Village Creek Development. I live in Homewood as well, on Roseland Drive. Like James said, you know, we put both of these pieces of property under control earlier this year. The sort of terms of the deal on the smaller parcel, the Dennis parcel and the parcel that's in question here, required us to have a much shorter due diligence period. And as a result, we closed on the property in August. And so we are the owners of that property, and we have control of the Econo Lodge property as it is. And sort of to echo James and not to be too redundant, we really just want to establish a consistent zoning for the property, for both of the parcels. And frankly, and looking at the zoning map, I'm sure you guys can pull it up, I don't understand how this property was ever zoned as a GERD in general.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. If anyone here wants to come speak to this case, this is your opportunity. And Mrs. Lef, I don't, well, should she sign in again, Fred?
That's my question. Do I sign in a second time?
I guess it wouldn't hurt.
And this time I will introduce myself, since I didn't last time and you were looking at me. Sorry. Beverly Price Lef, 617 Edford Road.
We knew who you were.
Well, it's for them. Okay, I could not hear all that they were saying because they were talking so softly, and there was so much chatter out in the lobby area. So it's my understanding that although the application is in Albritton Holdings' name, that they no longer own that property?
Yes, ma'am. At the time of the application made, that was the existing owner. And now we have purchased the property, it's WH536 Cobb LLC. To add, we had permission from previous owners.
Okay, and you also own the Econo Lodge property?
No, no, we do not. We have it under contract.
Okay, that's why I was very confused. I will say that my main concern about this is the residents behind this property. And it always has been our concern in West Homewood. At the time that the city was thinking about extending Scott Street and going around the Econo Lodge property and taking Dr. Albritton's property and having a street go through there. And that was when the West Homewood District was first being formed. You may not know about that, and I don't know that Sherry knows about that, but there was a plan to put a street through there, access to Cobb from Oxmore Boulevard so that you didn't have to turn onto Cobb from Oxmore. And to go, Scott would go around that way. And the neighbors did not like that at all because of the problems with the people that live on Gillan and Cobb, whose property's back up to that. And this is that same area, and I'm concerned about what they may be looking to do and that there won't be buffers there. Some of those residents are elderly and have lived there for 50 or more years. And I would hate to see them displaced, the Sarises and the Hubbard's, and some of them that his property backs up to that. And that's my concern if this goes through. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the city doesn't have any current plans to do the thing that you said with Scott Street?
I knew that was the answer, I'm just saying. That was a big concern, and then this brings all that property together and runs right against those people's backyards.
Anyone else from the public want to speak to this case? Seeing no one, we'll close the public portion. And gentlemen, if you want to come back up and answer or entertain any questions from the commission.
I just asked, do you mind sharing what your long-term plan is with the larger piece of property?
So we're still in the very early stages of our planning. We are seeking to change the zoning to WHD because we believe that we can develop a successful project within the zoning allowances for that zoning code, that zoning class. I think that, you know, one of the things that I would say is that I've seen in West Homewood, you know, the West Homewood District be very, very successful in its, you know, form-based code, driving, pedestrian, walkability, mixed-use type properties. And I think that that is something that we want to continue on and to, you know, keep within the WHD zoning.
And for the adjacent property, too? Is it, do you foresee one big project between the two?
That's what our ultimate goal would be, yes. And so like James was saying earlier, we would come back to you guys, present to you guys a master development plan for both parcels when both parcels were owned, and we were able to come in and be able to actually, you know, justify going out and sort of incurring the expense and the rest that would go along with trying to plan for something that we don't necessarily know we can do right now.
I wanted to point out that we had two letters received. One was in opposition but was mistakenly, under the impression that the property was being rezoned from residential commercial. And in fact, it is already commercial. So I will say that the premise of that letter is not valid. This was never a residential property. And then the other letter we received was in favor from residents on Cobb Street, so.
And to address the comments from earlier, our architect on this project is going to be Kyle D'Agostino. He's a Homewood resident. He lives very close to the backside of this property as well. So if anyone will be of concern with the aesthetic and how it all looks, he will definitely be making sure that it's nicely done. Yeah, he likes, he talks about it in irons, so I think he says he's a set an iron from there.
To be clear, you said you do not know what this is going to be?
We don't have an exact idea of what this is going to be right now. No, we don't. We want to engage in a full planning exercise. Kyle D'Agostino from Poole &amp; Company and James is firm at Shoal Engineering will be the ones who sort of spearhead that with us. Just to give you guys a little bit of background on me, I was the project manager and the developer for the Pezzitz Building for Bear Properties when it was developed. I left Bear Properties after that, and I went to Sloss Real Estate where I basically oversaw the re-merchandising of Pepper Place. So sort of in the last five to 10, five years, you know, the different tenants and restaurants and things like that have then have come on down there. So that's really what I'm about, is really creating sort of place-making destination type of real estate projects.
Ready for a motion?
I will entertain a motion.
I would move to approve.
I'm sorry, it was seconded by whom? All right. Okay. Ms. Wilcutt. Mr. Harwell.
Yes.
Mr. Armstead. Mr. Wilson. Ms. Andres.
Yes.
Mr. Cronteras. Mr. Broadhead.
Yes.
And Mr. Roberts.
Yes, so your case will go to the city council with a eight, eight, nine, a zero recommendation, positive recommendation.
Thank you all very much. Have a great evening.
Okay, next item on the agenda is recommendations of the nominating committee for the positions of chairman and vice chairman for the next year. I think, Mr. Wilson, you're prepared to discuss that?
We, as a committee, met between the last meeting and this one, and we unanimously recommend Mr. Roberts for chairman and Mr. Winslow-Armstead for vice chairman.
Okay. Anyone else from the commission want to offer any other nominations?
Just to make him nervous, I'd like to recommend Gianni Rospinto for vice chairman.
I recommend him for chair.
Okay. I guess we just vote on by acclamation, or do we have to?
Yes, in the absence of any other nominations from the floor, then the commission can vote on the recommendations of the nominating committee.
So all in favor of the recommendations of the nominating committee, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. All right, well, I guess that means I will continue. Mr. Armstead is our new vice chairman and ready to run meetings, maybe even as soon as next month. We'll see. All right, well, with that, I'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you.